I am delighted to call our City Council Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, June 19th, 2019 to order. At this time, we'll have our moment of silence and, you know, for today, I'd like us to think about, you know, today we announced the Red, White &amp; Boom celebration. And it is great when we, this morning, we were at Schwibert Park, but it was recognizing the fact of Davenport, Rock Island, and the Rock Island Arsenal coming together, the entire community working together. That happens more and more in our community. And again, I think that's a great opportunity on a day that salutes our, really, the founding of our country and the Independence Day that we had at that time. So with that in mind and a sense of collaboration in bringing not only our communities together, but our own community together, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Gripp, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Our next item, Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Guinness.
Here.
Clule.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to wish you a good evening and as we begin this meeting of our City Council, I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home or on the Internet, thank you for joining us. At this time, we would ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones or other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and mess with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the City Council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. And I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, and I know you all will. So thank you all for being here this evening. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We have four public hearings this evening. First is community development, and Alderman Rossen will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. My button's...
Try it now.
There it is. Okay, here we go. Thank you, Your Honor. I open a public hearing on the updated analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and I know there's someone from staff that was going to say a few things about this? Or should I wait till later? Did you want to do that now or later? Or no? I'm getting a blink deer in headlights look.
Bruce isn't here, so...
Okay.
Um, I wasn't there, but...
Okay, okay.
Yesterday was...
Okay, all right. Is anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I close this public hearing. And there's been a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Seeing none, back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Our second area of public hearing tonight will be in Public Works, and Alderman Dunn will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three public hearings for Public Works this evening. I open the first public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Eastern Avenue reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 1930s Interceptor Flow diversion project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Say aye.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. And I open the third public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 16th Street and Main Street street scape project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed, and this concludes the Public Works public hearing, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Just as a clarification, the public hearings open up the discussion, let everybody know that we're going to be talking about these. They're also in the agenda. When they're in the agenda, it basically takes a six-week process, and we're clearly giving everybody an opportunity to address any items until we open up the public hearing. Next, there are no presentations this evening, and there will be some petitions and communication from council members and myself. We're going to start with Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Few things tonight. First of all, we had a great time at Party in the Park last week at Cork Hill, and we had a pig. It was wonderful. So just a heads up...
It's a pet pig.
It was a pet pig, but it was a pig. Very cute. So it made a surprise appearance. So who knows what's going to happen at our next Party in the Park, which is Van Buren Park. That's June 27th, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30. The Allen will be our performing group, and again, all kinds of free food and fun. So hope you can come out to Van Buren for Party in the Park next week. And other announcements tonight, right now, volunteers are needed to assist in cleanup at Nahem Marsh. They've had some very serious damage there. If you want to volunteer, call 563-336-3370. You may need to leave a message because staff is very busy with ongoing efforts. They promised they'll call you back, but they do need your help. And you can then also volunteer to help clean up Nahem and some other areas during this year's Extreme Cleanup, which will take place on Saturday, June 29th. And that's a week from Saturday, but I would like folks to get it on their calendars. The focus is on flood areas this year, and the Nahem Marsh Cleanup is 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on that day, and there are certainly other locations that you can work at there. You can register at www.xstream, as in river, stream, cleanup.org/upcomingevents. This Saturday, you can also fill up at the Best of the Wurst, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the German-American Heritage Center. You can sample sausages from local vendors, you can purchase great food, enjoy some beer, while the adults can enjoy some beer, music by the Gutenberg German Band, and then you get to vote for the Best of the Wurst. Tickets are only $5, and children under 12 are free. And then June 22nd marks the beginning of Pride Week in the Claude Cities. Celebration steps off with the Unity Pride Parade on Saturday, beginning at 11:00 a.m. in Davenport on East Second Street, and crosses across the Centennial Bridge to Rock Island. The events continue throughout the following weekend, so, and mint listing, you can go to www.qcunitypride.org. And that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Mayor. As of December, I will have served this community for six years. This opportunity has truly been an honor and privilege, and I am grateful for this experience. I believe staff and council has done a great job of engaging the community over the last few years, and I hope someone or several residents in the 8th Ward will be interested to represent this area, as I will not be seeking reelection this fall. I look forward to being more available for my family and appreciate all of the support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you. Thank you to Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You started off talking about our collaboration with our neighbors across the River Rock Island. And I just wanted to say, I was awoken this morning at 3:00 to the collaboration with the Rock Island Police Department, our great police department, you know, chasing a criminal, a habitual criminal through my neighborhood. You know, that's the second time in a month my neighborhood has the experience of watching the two great police departments work together, and I want to thank our police chief and our police department for their effort. And I'm pretty disgusted with our court system because they're all habitual criminals, and we have a revolving door, and they end up back in our neighborhoods and our communities, and it's completely unfair. And if you have an opportunity, you should contact your state legislators and the governor and complain about this, but we're very thankful to have a great police department and know that they're doing everything possible to protect our city.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. I just want to announce a couple things. One, over the next year, we'll have over 60 boards, commissions, and committees, either individuals who are coming up for reappointment, whose terms are expiring, or individuals who, for a variety of reasons, resign and move on to other things or move out of town or whatever. To that end, we have prepared a basic overview of what's it like to be involved with the board or commission and committee. We're going to send those out to our, my colleague Alderman here, but also around the community, because it's an opportunity for individuals throughout our great city to have a chance to participate. And there's a number of you who've been involved and continue to be involved, and our Citizens Academy is drawing more people, but again, I think it's an opportunity to let people be involved, so we're going to do that. Lastly, Brandon, would you please come up a moment, please? Come on up to the podium and see what... You just, you do a great job for our city, and we want to recognize you. Today is your birthday. So if anyone would like to join with me, and let's get out of the way today.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Brandon. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everyone.
Anything else to say?
Not really. It was a wonderful birthday, and we should absolutely be celebrating Cory's birthday tomorrow.
(laughing).
We're next going to move on to our action items for discussion. Our first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Rossen is the chair, and Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have six items on the agenda this evening. First item is a third consideration for ordinance case number REZ-19-05, a request of John Wolfe to rezone 6401 West Kimberly Road from R1 Single Family Residential District to I1 Light Industrial District. Property contains 0.42 acres. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Second item. Okay. Second item is a first consideration, ordinance for case REZ-19-06, being the request of Hazvir Sinie to rezone .56 acres, more or less, a property located at 4607 North Pine Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to C2 Corridor Commercial Zoning District. And as you note on the agenda, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial of requests, which means we need a supermajority to pass, which means we need eight votes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Chris Cooper, 4601 Kelling Street, about a quarter of a mile from the property in question. Last Friday night, I attended a public meeting with council member Rossen, and I believe Gripp was also there. And there was something that Councilwoman Rossen mentioned about just the way the zonings are, what else is allowed, and kind of the gravity of this decision to rezone a property, what all is involved. It's been an interesting lesson in civics and what I can do to be involved in my community, but also a lot about planning and zoning laws. What specifically she directed me to was a very nice checklist that the state provides of ordinances of uses. Specifically, I discovered that gas station actually is allowed in C1 under a special use. It doesn't even require a council vote necessarily. You can just fire up a gas station as long as you can get the, I believe it's a Public Works Committee that has to sign off on a special use for it. But of course, retail alcohol sales is not a portion of that. That in fact does fall under C2. But what I also realized with our discussion Friday is this is more than just one proper, or one gas station. This is a property. This is a property and a legacy. This zoning decision will stand even when that gas station's gone. If they choose to sell it, close, it becomes someone else. We're not saying necessarily that by rezoning this, it's okay for, we're just going to put one gas station here. Instead, what we're saying is we're opening up a property of land where we could allow, without much other, you know, potentially some other special use and permits, but basically we're allowing a bar, car wash, potentially hotel, though a little bit of a small property for that, some sort of drive-through facility like fast food restaurant, a distillery, liquor store, maybe an auto repair shop, self-storage facility, drug treatment clinic, homeless shelters. These are all things that are C2 permissible. These are all things that this request is asking for us to place in our neighborhood, any one of these, not just one that we're making an exception for. We are talking about rezoning the property to allow any of these to someone in the future that wants to come in. And after looking at that, it's kind of changed my whole approach to this, and I'm still very adamant and would request that the council follow the advisory committee and perhaps choose to decline this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Oh, oh, sorry. Come on up. State your name and address for the record.
All right. Robert Ortiz, 4607 North Pine Street. Okay, first off, I'd like to take the, thank the mayor and Alderman for this chance to speak. First, I'd like to take a moment to clear up yet another lie that Judith Lee has started to this council at the last committee of the hall. She stated that I told the neighborhood that the trash issue wouldn't ever change. I understand people will lie to get an outcome that they want, but what is so confusing to me is it is easily proven wrong by Alderman Tompkins and Alderman Condon. What I did say is because Ms. Lee was confused and dominating all of the early questions, and most are only about liquor, she first thought if this item was to be voted down, we wouldn't be able to sell liquor again. I replied to her, "Ms. Lee, no, I'm sorry, but you are confused. Even if this is to be voted, no, we will continue on as is, and nothing will change." And I stated to the whole group of neighbors, "I hope we all can come meet again to talk about waste and trash problems in the future, and with cellphone technology today, if anybody would please take a picture or record the person putting trash in or by your yard to please bring it back to us so we can confront that person and get it handled." That is the truth, not the lie Ms. Lee wanted to spread. I hope Alderman Tompkins or Alderman Condon will please take a moment and confirm the truth. Thanks. Now, while we are here, we badly need new space for additional gas pumps. We want to put up a building that is more visibly pleasing to the eye and to the neighborhood, which in turn will increase lighting for more safety, eliminate standing behind the building, and offer more food and breakfast items than we concurrently can offer. We agreed to the same hours in the new building as it exists today. We also agree as a condition of the approval that we would no longer, not increase the shelving for hard liquor in our new building. So what exists today would exist in the new larger building. So there would be no change in an opportunity to increase sales, decrease sales. That's not why this, this project needs to move forward. What I am very proud of, and I think along with the conditions we have agreed to, is what, I'm sorry, I thought the police chief was going to speak before me, but just stated, contrary to the misinformation, again, misstated by Ms. Lee at numerous other places and in emails, this is not a problem station. Let me repeat that. This is, we, in the eyes of the Davenport Police Chief, are not a problem station. And one point I would like, that I think needs to be heard, is Alderman Tompkins stated at the neighborhood meeting, she has only had one call in six years about our station. I addressed it the same day, the issue was resolved, she never heard, she, she followed through with the neighbor's complaint, the neighbor was satisfied, and it was taken care of. One last point in this whole thing, I'm sorry, Alderman Mattson isn't here tonight, and I think it gets lost in this whole discussion, is he'll remember back in some of the Aldermen that were on this council seven, eight years ago, when there was no building there. We weren't there yet. While attending those meetings, there was many far more outcry because of the blighted building, the trash that was just piling up because there was nobody there to take care of it, and the liquor bottles that, that some of the neighbors complained about were being left there because of the bar next to us. We stepped up, we delivered, the last eight years or so. I hope this council will see all that we have done, all that we are agreeing to do if approved, and going forward, know that we are committed to the successful neighborhood. And I'd be answered any questions now or at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I've had the opportunity to work with this developer several times in the past. You know, he was taking abandoned and blighted properties and fixed them up, invested millions of dollars where they become an asset to the neighborhood, and, you know, I am concerned of some of the information that has been, you know, expressed about this store here, and I guess I, I think they've done a great job, and I'm thankful that we have a developer that's willing to step up to the plate in some of our core neighborhoods and invest this money and bring blighted property back to the tax roll and be a good neighbor. And that's, that's how I know this organization, and, you know, if anybody has any concerns, you know, feel free to call me. Thanks.
Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if please can come step up for a second? I did reach out and had a conversation last week. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Sure.
So thank you for sending out the reports, and I just wanted to clarify. So the questions that I asked last week was particular, do you have any concerns in regards to this property in looking at the reports? So if you could share that?
Yeah, I don't. We compared this property with 10 other properties, like properties around, around the city, and, you know, as far as calls for service go, they're not out of the ordinary. They're right in the, in the middle of other properties that are very similar in nature. So I don't have any concerns as far as the calls for service go.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Also, I just wanted to share thank you for everybody who has worked on this project. So I have heard from neighbors, attended one of the meetings, so I appreciate everybody coming down here, the phone calls, the emails, and also working with the business owners. So thank you as well. So I wanted to share my personal experience. So being on here for almost six years, Robbie, Mr. Ortiz is correct. I will share that I've worked with a lot of different businesses in this area, and he is the only manager who has contacted me regularly and asked for feedback. Hey, how are things going? Do you have any concerns? Have you got any phone calls? I don't get that from anybody else. So I, that's just my personal experience. He's correct in that I did receive one phone call, and that was probably four or five months ago, and it was in regards to trash. And I did respond, I did call him, and he responded right away, and I did get back to the neighbor. So I just want to share, I understand that there's some concerns. I appreciate everybody trying to work together on this. I, I have had a very positive working relationship. It's my understanding from my conversation last week with the police department as well that they knew this property address before the business came in, and that was because there were so many concerns. So again, if we look at kind of where this is going, their goal is to make it better, have more increased safety, increased security with better lighting, a newer, obviously, a new building. It's an investment in Davenport. He's also open, we've talked about some conditions, so I under, I completely understand, you know, C2 opens up the door to other opportunities, and I'm happy to have that conversation in regards to what are some conditions that we can put on so that a car wash or whatever in the future should, certainly hope the business doesn't go out of, out of business, but should that happen, what can we do? So I'm certainly happy to continue that conversation. But again, I think that Mr. Ortiz has been excellent to work with. I, I hope that this investment, I support this investment. I understand the neighbors' concerns, but I'm hoping that we can work together, and that was my expression on the very first meeting that we had with the neighbors. My recollection was, we had a couple of people who were concerned about it, and I stayed later and had some conversations with them, introduced them to the owners, and they met as well. So there were some concerns, but once we talked through things, I, I really felt it was more positive. So I'm, like I said, I, I hope this goes through, and I appreciate your investment, and we'll just continue this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move to discussion. Item number three on the agenda, resolution approving case F19-07 of Advanced Homes Incorporated for the final plat, Candlelight Village on 4.01 acres, being a replat of Lot 1, Candlelight Square, First Edition, located at 5330 Gaines Street, containing one lot, zoned RMF Residential Multi-Family District. Anyone from the, from public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number four, resolution approving case F19-10 of Dan Gunstein for final plat WK First Edition on 1.71 acres, being a replat of portions of Westland and Georgetown Square additions located at 3306 West Kimberly Road, containing two commercial lots. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number five is a motion accepting the analysis of impediments to fair housing. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a great presentation yesterday, and I think the city of Davenport has done a remarkable job hitting all those points over the years, and, you know, we have the, the study done because every five years, federal government has asked us to, but, you know, I'm proud knowing that the city of Davenport continues to make our community a very inclusive community, and our neighborhood's very inclusive. So thanks. Bruce, wherever you are.
Anyone else from council? I would just add, if you haven't read this report, do go online. There is a link on the city website under the Community Planning and Economic Development section. I read the report every five years, long before I was on council. It actually has quite a lot of really good data about fair housing across the city and demographics and whatnot, so it's a very interesting report. We do have some areas where we can still improve on, and hopefully with the implementation of the Davenport Dream Project and some future items, we can make this happen for everyone. So that item is the last item on the agenda. I'll ask Alderman Ambrose to set an agenda.
(inaudible).
Oh, sorry, we got, I mentioned dream, and I just skipped it completely. A motion direct, item number six, a motion directing staff to implement the Davenport Dream Project that I just mentioned for fiscal year '20, and is there a staff person that can come up and just do some brief summary of this? Here comes Sarah. Thank you, Sarah. This is an exciting program, so pay attention to the details. Starts July 1st, and Sarah, take it away.
Sarah, City Administration. The Davenport Dream Project is launching July 1st. We are utilizing a combination of CDPG federal funds and CIP funds that you as a council have allocated. We will have $900,000 in seed funding for this fiscal year, or this upcoming fiscal year, I should say, split between existing, an existing homeowner program and a new homeowner program. So to encourage people to move to the Davenport Dream Project area, we are offering grants of up to $25,000 for people who move into a home and rehabilitate it for existing For existing homeowners that live in the area, um, they are eligible for grants of up to $15,000 for exterior improvements and major mechanical improvements. Um, applications will be available July 1st. Um, and we are very excited and looking forward to seeing how this program impacts our urban core neighborhoods.
Thank you. Uh, Alderwoman Dickman?
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, thank staff and, uh, council members who really helped kind of push this idea forward and that I think we're gonna be getting a lot of good information from this program this coming year, uh, and I look forward to continuing to refine it as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this council has opened the door and with this program, you know, if future councils and mayors stay focused on it, I think we're gonna see a tremendous change in some of our core neighborhoods. I say that because over the last 10 to 15 years, we've refocused on our downtown and we've been incredibly successful. So this council has opened the door, you know, future councils and mayors, if they stay focused on our core neighborhoods, it's gonna, I think we're gonna see a remarkable change. So good job, Sarah and staff. And Bruce, wherever you are.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, yes, I wanted to thank staff for, um, you know, the, the council set as its gold, one of its, one of its major goals last year, urban revitalization. You know, the URTE change, that was a much richer, um, mix for, uh, when rehab is done to sort of abate taxes was, has come out of, um, that work. Um, and, um, you know, finding the money for this is always a challenge. We have many things we're paying for i- in the city. Um, but staff, uh, looked hard for ways to put the money together for this project for the next year. And I'm hoping that, you know, this will inspire everyone in council to, um, push again for this coming in the following year. But it's a great step. Um, um, we haven't had a program like this for a long time and I'm very excited. And, um, there, there's a, a lot of, um, within the program, um, if you go on the city's website to the Committee of the Hall Minutes, there is an overview of this program there you can download and look at. And you'll see in there a lot of, um, staff assistance and enabling and really, um, engaging with the people that are gonna be involved in this to make sure they're successful. And that's an important part of this as well. So I'm very excited and can't wait for July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Uh, and I would just add, um, and along with Marion's comments, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. So the program is actually very exciting. Um, if you didn't hear Sarah clearly, if you are someone who's looking to move into the Davenport Dream Project geographical area, and the, the map is online, um, you can apply for $25,000 of grant assistance to help rehab a home. And we have a lot of beautiful homes ranging from Bridge Avenue on the east side all the way over to the west end. So homes are just waiting for someone to love them. Um, and as also other, my colleagues have stated, you know, this is a, um, a program of a lifetime. Uh, the city's had other programs in the past, but I firmly believe this one is the, is, is the most interesting and the most exciting. And we'll be collecting data about the program over the course of this year and making changes. Uh, so part of the design of this program is to be very responsive to the needs of the community. So hopefully we will be completely overwhelmed with applications from across the Dream Project area that we just, just don't know what to do except try to figure out how to find millions of dollars to fund this for fiscal year 2021. So seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. I'll ask Alderman Ambrose now to set an agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll keep number one on, or number two on discussion and the rest of them on consent. Do I have a motion?
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Same sign. And we're done with community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rosson and Alderman Ambrose. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Grip will lead the discussion and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, public safety this evening. Item number one is a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. I'll read through all of the events and then ask for comments at the end. Uh, Christ Apostolic Church picnic, 1201 West 6th Street, Saturday, June 29th, 2019, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM closure. East-West Alley between Taylor Street and North Marquette, Marquette Street and West 5th Street and West 6th Street. Stephen Andrews, July 3rd block party, Wednesday, July 3rd, 2019, 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM closure, Western Avenue from West 7th Street South to the alley. Downtown Partnership, BIC Street Fest, 10:00 AM Thursday, July 25th to 12:00 AM Sunday, July 28th, 2019, closure. Second Street between Ripley Street and Brady Street, Harrison Street from the parking garage entrance, south of 3rd Street to the ground transportation entrance, north of River Drive, Main Street from the current hotel parking lot to the entrance of the parking garage. Heather Hall, graduation party, 6124 North Hancock Avenue, Saturday, July 27th, 2019, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM closure, North Hancock Avenue from West 61st Street to West 62nd Street. J&amp;M Displays Inc., Palmer College of Chiropractic, Homecoming Fireworks, Palmer Parking Lot, Northeast Corner of East 9th Street and Perry Street, Saturday, August 10th, 2019, between 9:00 PM and 9:30 PM, may vary depending on event, closure Perry Street between East 9th Street and north of 10th Street. St. Anthony's Catholic Church picnic, 417 North Main Street, Sunday, September 8th, 2019, 12:30 to 4:30 PM closure, North Main Street between West 4th Street and West 5th Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these items? Anyone from the council? These items will move on. Item number two is a motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. I'll read through, uh, these variance requests and then ask for comment at the end. Tina Hauser, Third Street Bar and Grill, Fourth of July event, 8:31 West 3rd Street, Saturday, July 6th, 2019, 3:00 PM to 11:30 PM, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Quad City Times, BIC 7, starting line flyover, Hawkeye Howitzer starting gun, race starting line at Brady Street and 4th Street, Saturday, July 27th, 2019, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM over 50 dB. Heather Hall, graduation party, 6124 Han, North Hancock Avenue, Saturday, July 27th, 2019, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, outdoor music over 50 dB. And J&amp;M Displays Inc., Palmer Chir, College of Chiropractic, Homecoming Fireworks, Palmer Parking Lot, Northeast Corner of East 9th Street and Perry Street, Saturday, August 10th, 2019, between 9:00 PM and 9:30 PM, may vary depending on event, fireworks over 50 dB. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these noise variance requests? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing none, these items will move on. Uh, item number three is a motion approving beer and liquor license application. Section A is new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera, as noted. Again, I'll read through all of these and then at the end ask for comment. Cathedral Ale, Sacred Heart Cathedral, 422 East 10th Street, outdoor area, license type B, beer. Mary's on Second, Pride Street, or Pride Fest, 832 West 2nd Street, extended outdoor area, rescheduled for June 28th, 2019, through June 29th, 2019, license type C, liquor. Paradigm, 320 East 2nd Street, license type B, beer. Street Fest, Second Street from Brady Street to Ripley Street, outdoor area, July 25th through July 26th, 2019, license type beer and wine. Azteca Mexican Restaurant, 4811 North Brady Street, Suite 3, into parking lot, extended outdoor area, August 3rd, 2019, through August 4th, 2019. Back-to-school bash, license type C, liquor. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these beer and liquor license applications? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, these items will move on. Section B is annual license renewals, and we do not read those, but they are there for your information. And that concludes public safety. I will ask, uh, Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I'm not sure if I'm quite ready to start talking about back-to-school bashes yet, but I will move that all items be placed on consent.
Second?
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Dunn will lead the discussion. Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have so, seven items on the agenda this evening, but before I get into the agenda, I believe the Public Works Director has a few updates for us.
Hello, Nicole Leeson, Public Works. Um, Alderman Ambrose had requested at the, um, management update yesterday, an update on, uh, grass over nine inches as well as potholes. So for the grass over nine inches, we have, um, had, uh, 537 citizen requests and an additional 400 inspections, um, that were not citizen-generated, that have resulted in, um, 306 abatements and/or owner compliances. We still have 105 open. This is primarily due to the wet weather. We do have a policy that if the ground's too wet, they don't abate because we don't wanna cause damage to the property. But we've also put in extra efforts to place orange stickers on properties that have been identified to help give that visual clue that we've been there and that the owner's been notified. Um, as far as potholes go, since January 1st, we have had 4,109 citizen requests. Um, 534 of those remain open. Um, they are being pri- prioritized by location, size, uh, about volume of traffic. Um, all week this week so far, we've had nine pothole crews out, um, working at them as hard as they can to, to get through those. Just for context, we visited the, um, areas we've visited so far this year, 4,400 areas. In all of last year, we had visited 4,700 areas. So we are on track probably to visit the same number of areas in six months this year that we did in all of last year, primarily due to that repeat freeze thaw we saw all winter and then that heavy torrential rain we had in the spring. It's just been wreaking havoc on the road. So we appreciate the patience and we are working just as hard as we can to get caught up. So, thanks.
Alderman Ambrose.
Nicole, first off, I wanna thank you and your team. You know, over the years, you've, you set a very high standard for, uh, responding to potholes, whether they're in the street or in the alley. You know, you, your crews would get out there sometime within 24 hours of the request. And this year's been a real challenge for the crews. So you've done incredible job with your team, setting a very high standard. You know, it's unfortunate after this difficult winter where we're seeing, you know, the, the greatest challenge for Public Works and the street crews that, uh, we can't make, we can't keep that standard. But I know your team will be working incredibly hard to get caught up and then reset that standard. So thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Rosson?
Thank you, Chair. I, since you were up here, uh, can you just give an update on the bridges that you gave yesterday?
Oh, sure, yeah. So, um, we do believe that the, the Elm Street Bridge particularly is eligible for the $1 million Iowa DOT bridge grant. That application period doesn't close until October and then the award cycle isn't until January. With the funding then available that following year after all of the steps have been, you know, achieved as far as plan review and whatnot. So with that being the timeline and us very eager to get those grants, we likely wouldn't start construction until spring of '21. So, all right, thanks. Yep.
Thank you, Alderman Rosson. Seeing no one else, Ray, you wanna speak again?
Yeah, one more time. Nicole, can you come up back? You know, the, the, the bridge, all the aldermen have had calls concerning these bridges. Can you give a brief history of how we got to where we're at today as far as the failure?
Right. So the bridges, um, this bridge and the 13th trid, bridge, street bridge both were in a state of deterioration. Public Works was doing potholes and things like that, but through annual bridge inspections, we determined that it was just beyond its useful life. Um, these bridges were not property of the city of Davenport. They were property of, um, the railroad. So we started working with the railroad on a replacement schedule and/or a deed. Um, they don't, I guess, facilitate the use of the railroad. They really just facilitate the flow of traffic. Therefore, the railroad really wasn't interested in maintaining ownership. So we did come to an agreement, um, where the railroad provided the city with 1.9 million dollars in exchange for ownership. That ownership transfer gave the city the ability to be able to apply for grants, which we hadn't been able to do previously.
Well, that, the railroads are always looking out for our great city.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole and Alderman Ambrose. Seeing no one else, we'll move into the agenda now. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the permeable paver alley from Pleasant to Lombard between Myrtle and Vine. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Rick? Little quick there. Alderman Grip?
Uh, I think I was a little bit slow, but thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to say, I thought this was going to be on the, uh, the agenda last week. We had the, uh, uh, you know, we discussed it at, at the top of the meeting and then it wasn't on the agenda. Uh, but anyways, this is something that, uh, neighbors in, in that neighborhood have been asking for literally since I, I got on council. And the moment I saw it come onto the agenda, I, I, uh, sent a message to some of the neighbors and one said, "I'm literally crying tears of joy that this is, has finally happened." So I wanted to, it, sometimes we see these items on the agenda, and they, they seem inconsequential, but, uh, you know, this is going to, to change life for, uh, the folks who live on, uh, these streets here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Seeing no one else. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Eastern Avenue Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 1930's interceptor flow diversion project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 16th Street to Main Street, street scaping project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the second-year option for sidewalk program to Kelly Construction Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $400,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, I just wanna say this is nice to see this project go to a local contractor. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number six is a motion approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of the cost for the Division Street Soccer Complex Parking Lot Resurfacing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number seven is a motion approving an amendment to the contract with CDMI Concrete Contractors for the Elmore Avenue Patching Project in the amount of $58,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Condon, would you set the agenda, please?
Yes, I moved to put all items on consent agenda.
We have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? This concludes Public Works this evening, Your Honor. Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Condon. Our last area to be discussed is finance and our vice chair, Alderman Kluw, will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, um, three items on the finance agenda this evening. The first being a second consideration, ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain, and operate in the city of Davenport, Iowa, an electrical system and communications facilities and to furnish and self-electric, and sell electric energy to the city and its inhabitants and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of 25 years. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Anyone from council? Councilmember Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have our finance director come up and talk about the fee part of this discussion.
Uh, sure. Brandon Wright, uh, Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Administrator. Uh, so a- as you notice in the language on there, it does include the idea of a franchise fee. Um, that's just essentially authorizing language. The city council has never approved a franchise fee for either gas or for, or natural gas or for electric. So there is no fee to be imposed. It's just part of the language of the, of the ordinance that would allow for it should the city council, uh, in the future decide to do that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. Any further comments from council? Seeing none, this item moves forward. Item number two, second consideration, ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive fran- successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain, and operate in the city of Davenport, Iowa, a natural gas system, and to furnish and sell natural gas to the city and its inhabitants, and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of 25 years. Anyone from the public care to talk to this issue? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves forward. And the last item is a resolution approving the renewal of general and auto liability, property and workers' compensation insurance, and related professional services for FY20 with multiple insurance companies in the amount of $1,144,390. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this issue? Council? Seeing none, this item will also move forward. I would move that all three items be moved forward to discussion. Motion's in made and seconded. Discussion, move forward to, I'm sorry, move forward to consent agenda. That's still seconded? Thank you. This, this motion is approved. Item number 10 is 12 items for your information-only, items between $10,000 and $50,000. So, that concludes the Finance Committee agenda. Oh, oh, excuse me. We have voted, it's seconded. May I ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, again, this motion is officially approved.
Thank you for the double duty, Alderman Clul. Thank you very much. Are there any other ordinance resolutions and motions this evening? Seeing none, is there any public with business this evening? Seeing no one, are there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.